Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
Trusty Johnson?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
The former president, Mr. Valdez. Um... Please, sir, with pleasure. Please, ladies and gentlemen, welcome the president. The House of Representatives. 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 The House of Representatives.[269.41][269.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[270.41][270.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[271.41][271.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[272.41][272.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[273.41][273.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[274.41][274.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[275.41][275.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[276.41][276.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[277.41][277.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[278.41][278.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[279.41][279.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[280.41][280.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[281.41][281.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[282.41][282.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[283.41][283.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[284.41][284.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[285.41][285.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[286.41][286.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[287.41][287.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[288.41][288.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[289.41][289.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[290.41][290.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[291.41][291.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[292.41][292.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[293.41][293.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[294.41][294.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[295.41][295.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[296.41][296.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[297.41][297.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[298.41][298.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[299.41][299.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[300.41][300.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[301.41][301.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[302.41][302.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[303.41][303.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[304.41][304.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[305.41][305.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[306.41][306.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[307.41][307.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[308.41][308.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[309.41][309.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[310.41][310.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[311.41][311.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[312.41][312.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[313.41][313.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[314.41][314.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[315.41][315.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[316.41][316.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[317.41][317.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[318.41][318.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[319.41][319.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[320.41][320.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[321.41][321.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[322.41][322.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[323.41][323.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[324.41][324.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[325.41][325.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[326.41][326.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[327.41][327.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[328.41][328.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[329.41][329.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[330.41][330.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[331.41][331.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[332.41][332.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[333.41][333.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[334.41][334.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[335.41][335.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[336.41][336.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[337.41][337.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[338.41][338.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[339.41][339.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[340.41][340.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[341.41][341.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[342.41][342.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[343.41][343.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[344.41][344.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[345.41][345.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[346.41][346.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[347.41][347.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[348.41][348.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[349.41][349.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[350.41][350.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[351.41][351.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[352.41][352.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[353.41][353.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[354.41][354.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[355.41][355.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[356.41][356.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[357.41][357.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[358.41][358.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[359.41][359.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[360.41][360.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[361.41][361.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[362.41][362.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[363.41][363.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[364.41][364.41][S01. The House of Representatives.[365.41][365.41][S01. The House of Representatives.
My name is Rick Adams.
Next question. Next question.
I received this notice in the mail or under my door, whichever, about the water increase. Is that true?
The water increase is ongoing up yet.
At the rate this this notice says, it's just crazy. I'm on social security, have been for years, and we got a big whopping two and a half percent increase for next year. We cannot afford this. My family and I are on fixed income.
We are.
And this is just...
We all are.
Fixed income.
We can't... Can you folks afford this?
No.
This isn't Winnetka. It isn't... It sure isn't Kellworth. We've got to have something here for people of lesser means than those on the North Shore.
Okay, thank you. Next one. Then... Your name? Your name, sir?
Rick Adams.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Stacy Haynes. I never received the notice about the increase.
Nobody did.
Nobody did. Okay, then why does he have one?
An individual took it.
An individual took it.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Go ahead.
That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Okay, back.
Wait, wait, we're not done yet. Go ahead, you...
Yes, my name is Dollar France. As a young man, young man was saying back there, we all are senior citizens. We all on fixed income. Probably everybody in here is senior citizens, so I might look a little better than senior, but they all with the age. Thank you. So we all are senior citizens. We're all on a fixed income.
Okay.
We're going to be on a fixed outcome.
No, with all due respect, could you please go back and answer his question before... I mean, I forgot what that he asked. I'm trying to do it. I got a document. Go ahead. So we're having this... Yeah, this is John Hayup.
I've been living in the village all my life, fifty-five years. I've never been registered to vote. I've never voted before. I can't stand politics. I'm sick of the power-hungry people in government. And basically, this thing brought me here for the first time in my life. I venture to say John Cap might be the only guy here that's been burning all over me. Simply put, simply put, the only reason I know about this water bill increase... You can say you advertise it all you want, but I was walking around the block with my dog the last month or two, and I happen to run into Jerry Hunter. He told me about there's going to be a water bill increase for... I figure it's going to be five, ten percent. You accept that. You expect it these days, and you're like, oh. And what happens is, I found out about a half an hour after the last board meeting that the water bill increase is going to be two, three hundred percent. Now, I understand he's been fired about six months ago, so he might be a disgruntled employee. I got that. Well, if I may finish, you're not all right here. If I may finish, I came to, on my own, to the village... I'm on the clock, so please don't interrupt me. I came into the morning to see... I forget your name, Stephanie? And I asked her, I understand there's going to be a higher water bill. She said, yes, there will be. I asked her, how much will it be? She says, I have to fill out a creative information request. I says, you've got to be kidding me. This is Burnham. Well, she hands me a request, she walks away for three, four minutes, she comes back, two stacks of papers. One of them's got the sewer tax, the other one's about thirty-five, forty pages of your water bill increase. Now, we're supposed to read that. She couldn't just tell me a number. Well, after reading through it, it's a little too obfuscated to give a simple number or two. So where else was I known?
Let me correct you. That is not Stephanie, that's Trusty Bryan and Greer.
I was talking about Stephanie though. Stephanie's the one that worked... I was looking at her, but I was referring to Stephanie.
I just want to clarify.
Stephanie's the one that...
She works in the...
She was home alone that day.
Yeah.
So I came and I did that. Now, what I did was, I got word that... I just tried to verify and see if Jerry was telling truth or not. Okay, that. So what I did, I got word that the thing was on YouTube, so I looked on YouTube. There was an elderly woman here, asked you simply, she says, well, we're... We're going to fight this. We're going to try to fight this. And under your breath, I hear you say, oh, you already lost.
Yep.
To me, I know you said that. It's not... It's unusual.
It's on YouTube.
It's unusual. Another...
Long time ago.
Another...
A whole bunch of you.
Sir, let me ask you this. This is my question. Back in two thousand four, Nancy Dubrowski was... She filed for divorce? Filed for divorce. Filed for bankruptcy? Thank you. With her husband? In excess of two hundred grand debt? Well, fast forward to two thousand thirteen, you were elected in two thousand five, the year after she filed. Two thousand thirteen, you've been in office for eight years, and she's still your village clerk, and the feds came in and knocked the doors down. They took her out, arrested her. Tribune finally got a hold of you, and you says you didn't know, you weren't aware. Okay, fine, I give you the benefit of the doubt. I don't know how, but we'll let that go. Okay, two thousand fourteen, she sentenced eighteen months in West Virginia, federal prison. Two thousand fifteen, this is two questions for you. One, I got to ask you, based on the fact that you didn't know nothing about Nancy, you weren't aware, well, simply put, there's an awful lot of money that's been coming your way now with this water bill increase. Can I suggest, anybody who has any hands on the village money from here on in, can I suggest they have a background check on all you guys, since you weren't aware of Nancy? Perhaps we don't know... We don't know about Lucy's background. Perhaps she's innocent. But what if she's not? You didn't know about Nancy? Maybe you don't know about some of these other people. Only people that have their hands on our village fund. Can I suggest that? Have a background check just to keep people honest, and if you're honest, you've got nothing to worry about.
Well, let me suggest... Can I ask one more question? It's real simple.
You should have... You might have to answer this. In two thousand fifteen, you also... You, on behalf of Burnham, filed a lawsuit against the two accounting firms that were overseeing Nancy. Okay? I was wondering, whatever came about that, as far as... Was there a result of the court case?
Well, we got a third of the money back.
How much was that? Do you know? I don't even know what the... What the suit was for. The amount...
Oh, maybe a hundred and thirty thousand. I don't know exactly. We got about a third of it back.
But six hundred... Okay, six hundred fifty she took, and you got... Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move on to the gentleman. Sir, I think that we can all say in a good fairness that we expect the utmost professionalism from our front office, and anytime that that's not given, hopefully our emails will be uploaded to our website, villageofburnham.com, very shortly, where you can email any of us if you have any other problems as far as unprofessionalism or rudeness from the front office. If you ask just for a simple figure and you're given a void request, I don't think that's very polite or professional.
In fairness to her, I don't think she could have given me a fair number, because you still don't know the exact numbers tonight.
No, that will be addressed. It will be addressed.
Okay.
Are there anyone else on this side? Okay, the next side?
Okay, my name is Joyce Bishop. I have in my hand a letter from the Illinois EPA. At the meeting two weeks ago, we were lied to. We were told that the EPA was making us put in these new digital water meters. The letter is dated January twenty-third, Mr. Mayor, and addressed to you, the Honorable Mayor Polk, Robert Polk, Village of Burnham. And it is not only about water meter replacement, it's about water main replacement. And I talked to both Springfield and the gentleman in charge of the Cook County region. And this document was approved in July by our board of two thousand sixteen. It's now going to be two thousand eighteen. We're just hearing about it now, okay?
Two weeks ago, we heard about it.
Thank you. Why have there been no open meetings, hearings, whatever you call them? This building cannot accommodate the whole town, obviously. At the Little Burnham School, flyers going out, notification of some kind, in a thoughtful manner and caring manner for the constituents that live in this community. On the page... The letter's dated January twenty-three, two thousand seventeen, ladies and gentlemen. And it states that the net operating income is a negative of five hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. And they ask... The EPA asks the question, why is the water system operating income negative five hundred thirty-three, six hundred and twenty-two dollars? I'm asking you that question, Mayor. Why is that?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, because one of the reasons is because we aren't charging enough. And the second reason is that we have to struggle sometimes and get the money from the people who need it.
Okay. What does the nursing home pay for the water? Or Bria, now is their name.
Well, we're not going to get into any of that.
We're not going to get into that. I understand. Okay, let's get into the EPA letter. The EPA says, it states from you, Mayor Polk, that a rate increase will not be necessary to pay for the proposed project from the EPA.
Well, that actually did not come from me, per se. At the time, that was a recommendation of Robinson.
It's on their station or their letterhead, Mayor.
Wait a minute. You're not in charge of the meeting.
It's her three minutes.
As I was saying, that originally came from Robinson and you, Mayor.
Okay, I have my three minutes. Please don't interrupt me. This is letterhead from the EPA. It's visible to anyone who wants to come touch it, feel it, read it. I have no reason to lie, and I'm not putting something out there from Robinson. This is Illinois EPA. Okay? The body that regulates our water quality. In addition to that, Mr. Cap, you mentioned, when I asked how... How much we're paying that yearly for a twenty-year period, you said, oh, about fifty thousand a year, correct? Didn't you say that?
I know exactly the number. I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, you said, yeah, somewhere around fifty thousand.
It's on film.
The amount is eighty-seven thousand, sixty-four dollars. You're in charge of finance. You should know this stuff. Sorry. You have a job. You should know this. You should come to the meeting prepared. Okay? The project amount, we were told, was one point two million dollars. Okay? According to the EPA, you have requested one million, four hundred, eighty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. In addition to that, they included a chart, a project schedule, not only for the water digital meter replacement, but also for the water main to come from Torrance Avenue, heading north to one hundred and forty-fifth Street, and then going east to Saginaw at one hundred and forty-fifth Street. Okay? July two thousand sixteen, loan pre-application was revised and resubmitted to the EPA, because the first one, ladies and gentlemen, was denied. The next project plan was submitted July two thousand sixteen, and the EPA approved it in August of two thousand sixteen. October two thousand sixteen, the permit was submitted and approved. Final project plan approval was January two thousand seventeen, before the election. We were never notified. January two thousand seventeen, the loan application was finalized by the EPA. The bid opening and contract award happened in March. In April, the loan agreement and notice to proceed was issued. That happened in April. May, they were supposed to start construction. October two thousand seventeen, according to black and white legal documents from our state, was supposed to be completed already.
In October.
Where has the money gone?
So I'm asking you and the board respectfully to, uh, target or drive it, pretty much. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Yeah, John O'Bannon was through that commission. I just think that if we go, if you go ahead with these new proposals and this new water ordinance, you're gonna lose a lot of residents. And you're gonna have a lot of vacant homes because people are not going to be.
I mean.
Already, I did talk, speak with someone in Calumet City and they raised it not nearly past Burnham for a small town.
They sure not.
And then also, we not getting salts on the street like we supposed to when they come and, uh, do the street cleaning. There was some, uh, I was, uh, fleeing out there in an accident the other day.
I'm sure it's.
Well, I don't know, I don't think so.
Okay, next one?
My name is Terrence Maynard, another one four one thirty-four Burnham. I live here from forty-fourth year. You people are, are rages. How do you justify a thing like this? How do you justify your existence? How much money do you get for your lack of doing anything? You do nothing for us. You do nothing for the village, except sit on your duck.
Well, I work all the time, I get about seventy-five an hour.
Oh, you don't do it. You don't do a bunch of thing for me. That's for damn sure.
We graded out.
Don't talk about that alley.
Don't talk about that alley.
I also was in touch with the EPA. I talked to the regional and in Springfield. And everything that Joyce has said today is a fact. This proposal that he has gotten to us was done last year. They've been sitting on one point two million dollars since spring of this year.
Who's been sitting on it? The city already has it?
Yes. And when we were at the meeting two weeks ago, my question was,
I heard it.
was this loan approved already? And Mr. Polk, you told me no. I also asked, or Joyce asked, if there was any interest on this loan. You said no. Yes, there is. There is interest on that one point two loan? And it has already been approved. They have been sitting on it. I wanna know, where's the money? Where's the money that the water department is in the red for? Whose pocket is it going into? Quite honestly, Mr. Polk, I think it's time for you to step down and maybe Mr. Caff or somebody else take the mayor's position.
They're all in hoots.
Carol. And I want it in the record.
Hey, guys, guys, they're, they're gonna shut us down.
My name is Mary Ann Shea, and I would like to know if we're in the red in the water department, why aren't we getting our meters red? Do we have to go around and do it ourselves? You have an employee or employees that do it. What are they doing?
We're going to address that. All right, next question?
I, I, I would like to add to that.
Now we done.
Mayor Polk, one, one quick point. If we can't do it on a quarterly basis, how the hell are we gonna do it on a monthly basis?
Amen.
I just have a few things I want to say. First of all, I think having effective fire hydrants. I have three on my block on Mackinac. And like I said, we give little raincoats for all our fire hydrants. We have a, we have a, the refinery company that's right across the street. Now, that fire department cannot go ahead and hook up to anyone. Who do you think I'm gonna come and sue? I am going to really sue the village of Burnham for, for fire department. And they haven't been practicing the firemen. That I can, I don't know where they're practicing, but they usually practice on Mackinac. Well, they haven't been there, let me tell you. Maybe they sold all their fire trucks, I don't know.
Well, they're always the last ones on the fire.
My other question is, if you only had your village clerk, you're saying only thirty percent of the money came back. Well, honey, she's handling millions of dollars. You should have had her bonded for millions of dollars, not only one-third or one-fourth or whatever it is. You should have it bonded more. That bonding money is cheap money, but it's security money. We would've gotten every penny back that you're saying that Nancy took or whoever paid.
We did get it back.
Well, the state statute does not require, the state statute only requires a three thousand dollar one hundred.
Well, I did not know that. And then my other question is, why is your office in the youth building? Your office, your mayor's office in the youth building?
My mayor's office is here.
Oh, well then the person that you were talking to, you kindly said to her, oh, this is my office and it was in the youth building where the, they were doing the licenses.
Yeah, well, I have a place down there where I sit and, I mean, take that business, my official office is here.
Yeah, but you, but so you're taking up space in the youth building?
It's refreshing.
They required the building for.
But I mean, it was hushed up until it was brought to mind. I never mentioned it to you. This is the first you're hearing about it.
May I have your name?
My first name is Nancy Rose, small r. Holinsky, H.L.I.N.S.K.Y. And I'm older as Burnham is dirt because my great-grandparents settled in Burnham. So that shows you about how old I am. I'm two hundred years old.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next question?
I got one more, one more question. The water pressure. Are we ever gonna get good water pressure in Burnham? Over where we live?
Okay, we'll address.
We got nothing.
We'll address that.
Yeah, when, next year?
It's almost here.
Okay.
Hey, I'm Debbie Zepkowski, I live on one hundred thirty-eighth. And the construction, they're not paying for any of our damages they did. They sucked out all the groundwater. It's done. They're not paying for none of that. And my question is, what these.
I thought you had addressed that with them.
They didn't do nothing because they're badly up.
That's a good village.
Well, my question is, we're getting new digital water meters, right?
No.
Okay, are we gonna pay what our water meter says? Or are we gonna pay this minimum stuff? Because I do not use a hundred gallons of water a day.
Right.
I mean, it'll be an actual reading, right?
None of this minimum stuff.
But you're still paying minimum. Let me get back to that.
That was quarterly.
We're going to address all these questions once we done.
You ain't gotta remember.
I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting.
Well, he raised his hand.
Yeah, Ed Brock, I live on Green Bay and, uh, most of the concerns that I have, the reason I'm here, have already been addressed. Uh, my concern is that nobody notified anybody. We would've never known about this water increase. What we're gonna do, just dump on three hundred percent or two hundred fifty-nine, whatever is stated. And, you know, everybody here, like the lady said there, it's already been said that they're senior citizens and we can't afford to be just paying out this money. Unless there's a reason why the water is going that high, other, maybe we're paying back this loan that, uh, Joyce was talking about. I don't know what we're trying to do. But we need some explanation of why, you know, this water bill is going up that much. I read my meter every three months because I got a, an estimated bill one time for like two, two hundred sixty-seven dollars, I think. And I wanted to know why. Well, nobody was reading the meter, so I said, well, I'll, I'll read mine, you know, just so. So my meter, I read it every three months. But I don't know how many of these people are willing to do that when it is really the village's responsibility to be reading the meters. Uh, so like I said, I'm here just stating, standing with the people here that I don't think that, uh, that it, three hundred percent raise in the water bill and the sewer rate and no senior discount, which has, as far as I know, has been in effect for, uh, as long as I can remember. And I know people that have already passed on and said, oh, you get a senior discount. So I don't know why we're eliminating that. But if you can explain why the water is going up for, if somebody's charging you a lot more, or where this money is supposed to go, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You know, one other guy in the question over there.
My name is Frank Caputo, I live on, uh, one hundred forty-second and Mackinac. I need a reason why you're not giving the senior citizens a discount anymore. On what I've heard, Mayor Polk's just not doing it anymore. That's not good enough. Not for any of us here. A reason has to, you have to produce a reason, not to say, eh, you're not getting it anymore. That's, that's how I feel right now.
You're a French bar, you created from the wrong question, we'll address that.
He asked the wrong person.
Uh, well, what I've been told, uh, huh? Mr. O'Bannon. What I've been told, if the water bill goes up, no matter how much it go up, it's hundred or two hundred percent, two more years, it goes up again.
Yes, it does.
That's right.
I'm just saying, so they say every two years the water goes up. So if it go up to two hundred percent and we can't pay it, then two more years, it goes up again. That's, that's all I was saying.
Okay, well, thank you everybody for the comment. At this time, I will ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Aren't you gonna answer a question before you close it?
I'll ask for a motion, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public. I need a motion for a trustee.
What does that mean?
That means you can't ask any more questions.
Let the motion for closing question, what's for either second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
It's ten seconds, I trust it, we're twenty seconds, bro.
No, after we cap, we make the motion. Trustee cap. Point of order, ma'am. Trustee cap. Madam clerk, point of order. After we make the motion, you open it for discussion. Trustee cap.
Yes.
Trustee Bonner. No. Trustee Garcia. Trustee Greer.
Yes.
Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
The meeting is now closed to the public. We always thank you for coming.
Mayor Polk, does that mean you're not gonna explain any? You said, I, this is the first time I've been here.
The meeting is now closed to the public. We'll address your question as best we can. We always appreciate you being here and we welcome you being here.
When do we get the answer?
As far as the, um, as far as the meters are being read or not being read, I certainly agree with you that our system for reading the meters is not necessarily up to par. And we only have unlimited employees, unlimited resources to do that. So we have, um, got the fire department involved, volunteer fire department will be helping us to do that. And we will make sure, do everything possible to make sure we get an accurate reading for every person in the village. Every person in the entire village. Now, if you're not at home, then we will leave a card at your door. And you will please get back to us at the door.
They haven't been doing it.
They haven't been leaving. Close the meeting.
And it will be there, but it will be there, and you got my word on, okay?
You didn't answer.
But we will take care of that.
You didn't answer my question. Can you answer the questions in the order they were asked? I forgot what you asked.
Okay.
Who's accountable?
I think this Patty asked a question as, as to how much, um, did you ask how much the rate will, I believe?
I, me?
Yeah.
No.
Patty Addison?
I, I wanted, I wanted to know why we have to do it all at one time. But, but now with, in light of the information that I got from this side.
Well, let me say again.
Why, why?
We close the meeting.
How?
Well, the meeting is actually closed, but let me say this.
You can't, you can't ask questions if it's closed.
Right, I'm not asking questions. Let me say this, well, first of all, the village of Burnham, we have not gotten a loan from anyone for this purpose.
You what?
I said, we have not. Okay, we have not gotten a loan. And there's been, no loan has been approved by anybody as far as the EPA goes, no loan.
How can they have a letter to that effect?
There's been no loan period at this time.
It's a grant.
It's a grant?
All right, so go back to.
Not this time. Not this time.
Well, that's three months, you want to pay back?
And not this time, we have not got any money from the state or anybody else in regard.
That's not.
But what about the thing, if you apply for a grant, plus to help us out with the meters and get everybody to pay a certain amount for their own meters? As opposed to increasing the rate like that? You let them know they have to pay so much.
I mean, what we will probably do without prefer, because some of the trustees is that, I mean, after a year or so, we probably can go back and revisit this. But in order for, to qualify for the loan, we have to be able to show that we can pay for the loan. And that we can repay all that.
So, so go back to your original comment. Is rate going from twenty-five thousand to eleven dollars a thousand?
Yes, yes.
So our, basically, our rates are gonna be tripled.
Ain't nothing we can do about it?
How much? You, you told me earlier that we're getting our water from the city of Chicago, is that true? Or are we getting it from the city of Hammond?
Both.
Getting from Hammond.
Okay. Have they tripled our rates to the village of Burnham?
No.
Yeah, that's simple yes or no?
The question else is that, uh, statement that I'm gonna make here is again, the village of Burnham should have, if they're not, have raised the rate maybe a little bit more on the year. Maybe we should have done it.
Right.
I'm sorry, you already admitted that you haven't collected the money that's due, that's due because of shoddy, uh, caution.
Part of the deal.
Who's responsible? That's what you never answered.
Well, the village is responsible.
Who?
So then why are we paying for your mistake?
The village is responsible.
I mean, happy employees are not here.
You're their boss.
They want to hunt a good job, but that's besides the point.
But we have a four-tand clerk though, we have a hard time with. We have a hard time with a four-tand.
Well, the clerk doesn't go out and read meters.
They have a business.
Now, as far as the senior exemptions go, as far as the senior exemption go, I mean, we give a senior exemption on the garbage. We give a senior exemption on the, uh, I mean, we weren't giving it on the water bill, but we give it on the village sticker. In most towns.
Most towns do that. Every town around here does that.
I mean, in most towns, I mean, in most towns, the seniors only get one exemption.
Okay, uh, I got one.
They get one exemption for their vehicle and they get an exemption for their utilities.
I got one question.
We are gonna, we are gonna look at, uh, some other incentives.
I got.
To go out to some of Lake Erie, you know, concerning the village stickers and some of those things.
I got, I got, I got, I got one question.
We are gonna, we are gonna look at that.
You already have that in place, mayor. You already have that in place.
I got one question.
We'll let you know for a second what we plan to do.
Well, you already have a senior exemption in place for vehicles.
Okay, the meeting is actually closed to the public, please.
Who's in charge of the water department? Which trustee's in charge of the water department?
That would be, uh, trustee Richardson.
Then why didn't, why didn't you notice there was, the bills were not being paid for the water department?
They've known.
Yeah, you can't answer.
I don't, we're in the office that, uh, the.
They're taking the water.
Mayor Polk, would you at least leave the seniors alone out of all this?
Yeah.
Well.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a senior, could you?
I mean, the faculty manager.
Anybody deserves to break it, the seniors.
I mean, the faculty manager, they're.
A rodeo town on. Burnham has a twenty percent poverty rate. They're useless, they're worthless.
And with the new meters, you will be able to regulate as to how much water you're using. That way you will be able to see, right? It will also give an alert to the office, you know, if there's a leak to property or whatever the case is, we will be able to see that and we can have that offer you. And if some people have internal reasons, don't know about it, even now.
If we're having trouble paying our bills now, you're tripling the bills on top of that in this economy.
They gonna lose a lot of residents.
I'm trying to be fair, I'm trying to be nice to you.
I just, I just, I just wanna say, uh, I just wanna say, I just wanna say.
Give everybody paper.
I, I know you said there ain't nothing we can do about it. Do that still hold, ain't nothing we can do about it? Do it still hold? Can we do anything or we can't?
Mayor, you can change things.
We need to go ahead and submit this to the EPA and we can come back and visit this for then a year or so and see where we are.
So in other words, we wasting our time, ain't nothing we can do.
Nothing we can do. And I'm gonna have Mr. Gillio over come up from, um, from Calumet City, come in and maybe he can explain a little bit more to us about the IFRR meters and how they work and.
We, we know how they work.
And the meters, the meters are not gonna cost the residents anything. The meter's not gonna cost the residents.
Why the rate?
Because water will cost.
We need a bunch of water, they're trying to say.
That's what the law is all about, put new meters in.
Yes.
He said it's not gonna cost us anything.
That's right. How much are the meters individually? Do you have a cost for the meeting?
They're a hundred dollars.
I liked it.
No, they're not a hundred dollars.
The man had one installed for a hundred.
Yes.
Mike Kellum at City, he was at the meeting two weeks ago.
How much was it?
A hundred dollars.
Hey, how about if we all pay for our own meter, metering?
Yeah. There you go.
You don't need a loan.
Quiet, please. Mayor's called ordering this meeting.
The meters, the meters have to be.
I'm sorry, sir, the meeting's been on for a very long time.
And the meter has to be downloaded to the software here in the office. So it's not just the fact of buying a meter, it has to be downloaded to the software so it can be compatible. So I'm gonna let Mr. Gillio give us some information.
I can ask one more question. You said there's gonna be some changes to it? Come January first, our new bills are gonna, are gonna start. Can you?
No. It can't start, you don't have a chance.
Wait, wait, so January first, we're gonna continue with the rate we got now?
We didn't celebrate, we started the last meeting and some of the people.
I got a copy of your order.
You know, I called our incompetent water department here, it's the water clerk, court's office. Brandon came out and read my meter, mayor, and it was six hundred forty-seven thousand zero-two-two. December, right after, the day after our last meeting here, sir. And do you know, when I called the village hall, they told me, when I asked what my meter reading was in January of twenty seventeen, they told me it was three million gallons of water. On one person, I live alone, I work, I met my children's, my grandchildren's and my disabled brother most of the time. How could I have a three million gallon usage of water? And when I told them, how could it have gone down twelve months later to six hundred and forty-seven thousand? They didn't have an answer for me, told me they would get back to me. No one has called me back, sir.
Well, we'll have to look into that and that's probably just a line that you all, nobody else.
Three million gallons? Thank you, sir. You know, one of us, you know what? There are several residents asking why you didn't call me out at the last meeting. Yes, you did, sir. It's not true. Information, that's from the EPA. Okay, I'm gonna contact them and tell them you said it's not true. Thank you.
Call the White House, it's not true.
Oh, don't call the attorney. ICC.
Let the man speak. Let the man speak.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Mayor Polk asked me to come by and give a little bit of background on the census metering system. On the census metering system, uh, census meters have been around for a long, long time. They've changed names a couple of times. They're very, very popular regionally and it's a good quality meter. Uh, they are made here in the United States. And the read system, the, uh, I'm not sure if the village is entertaining a drive-by or a tower system?
Drive-by.
Drive-by. The drive-by system. The drive-by system is cost-effective. And, uh, for the village of Burnham, it will, you'll be able to read the meters, all the meters in less than an hour's time. Um, the, the signal is a strong signal and it's, it's a good system. It's, it's pricey. It's not the most expensive, but it is pricey, but you get what you pay for with the transmitters.
Yeah, what's pricey?
Relative to other systems.
But if it's cheaper to read, then it should offset, then it should offset and just be even then.
Amen.
Because they're not gonna spend so much money to read it. But they're not reading them now. So it should just stay the same.
Let me, let me clarify a little bit if you could, please.
They're gonna save money on reading it, but we're gonna spend more money for what?
So the, the, the digital read system, the census meter system, it has a history behind it. It has a local presence behind it in that a number of towns locally have census meters in place. And they work good. And they stand behind them, they're made in America, you'll like them, no doubt about it.
We not arguing.
You'll like them for, you'll like them for the accuracy, you'll like them for the clarity in that you, you can, you can very easily see and understand the usage, unlike the dial versions today, it can be hard to read.
We did argue that.
You can't read.
Regionally, what I can speak to, and, uh, I, I understand a lot of the frustration. What I can't speak to is this, prior to twenty twelve, regionally, no one cared. When the city of Chicago tripled the rates that they charge, all of a sudden, water became important regionally. City of Chicago never, they, they didn't read, residentially, the city of Chicago, they don't have water meters. Up until twenty thirteen, when the city started installing meters on their own residents. They never even had meters. They're about fifty percent through installing meters, new meters, they didn't, again, they didn't have them placed. New meters on their residents, they're about fifty percent through right now, putting them in. The DNR, not the IPA, but the IDNR, is putting new, new rules into place, mandating that towns have to account for how much water they purchase. And it's been a struggle for a lot of towns. The rules that they, the IDNR in Department of Natural Resources, because we get our water from Lake Michigan, the IDNR is actually the governing authority when it comes to water loss.
What's IDNR?
Department of Natural Resources, I apologize.
I'm sorry, sir. And, and according to the IDNR, are, uh, they want the water loss rate to be at what percent?
They. The goal is less than, it's a, it's a staggered reduction.
And what's ours, sir?
That I can't speak to.
It's over thirty percent?
It, it's a staggered reduction. And for instance, one of the, uh, calculations that the IDNR used to take into account was the age of your infrastructure and the type of pipes that were in your structure, your infrastructure. You've got cast iron water mains, you've got a lot of galvanized service lines. Both of those are older, they're prone to leak. And they would, okay, you've got X amount of miles of cast iron and galvanized pipe. Instead of, if you have a thirty percent water loss, we're going to account that as fifteen percent after the calculations. That's what it used to be. In the future, it's there sets down to where they won't allow that. And inaccurate meter readings is part of that. The older the meters are, the more inaccurate they are. The meters in Burnham, a lot of them are over twenty-five, over thirty years, maybe even over forty years old.
Excuse me. So it's bad to replace the meters?
Yes.
This is exactly what I was bringing up with that you guys fixed that water line at a hundred and, approximately a hundred and forty-third and Mackinac at least twice, if not three times this year by Mike Kajinski's old house. And the water hydrant in the vacant lot at a hundred and forty-second leaked for well over a month. We have to have a lot of water loss there rather than at the meters, as you well know, because you guys do most of the work in the town.
But the reason that that meter, that hydrant didn't leak that long.
That hydrant leaked for over a month, mayor.
The person that was in charge of that, I mean, kept giving it to run around and, and at that time, uh, I was still working, uh, full-time.
I know that. I'm not, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, we have a lot of water loss in those areas.
And I was not around to make sure that he did take care of that. And I think like I said before, my wife was dying of cancer.
Yes.
At the time, and there was just so much going on, but you were correct, it did leak for a while and he just did not take.
I called it into your office and Mike Kellum didn't take care of it today. I called him the next day. I called one day and he fixed it the next. They were able to just repair it, he didn't have to replace it.
But it did leak for over a month, John.
I didn't know that, though. I called.
I called the village and they said they knew and that was the end of it.
I called as soon as I knew.
But what I'm saying is, don't, don't you think a lot of our water loss is in situations like that rather than through the meters?
I mean, when we find water mainage, we try to get them repaired. So we have one a couple of months ago.
Okay, I'm sorry, carry on.
My meter's out in the alley.
In the vault?
In the vault. It's been replaced because it went bad, so I got it, I got a reasonably new one.
In a vault. It's been replaced because it went bad, so I got it, I got a reasonably new one. Um, nobody reads my meter. So regardless of whether it's leaking between my house and, you know, and my toilets are running and I'm using a hundred million gallons of water, nobody's reading my meter. So how is this supposed to fix?
Cause it'll be automatic.
The, the meters that the.
Hey, Mike, can I say something, please? You know what, we'll have to check the records tomorrow because to my understanding, our water meter read all the meters over there and some of them had to be dug out in the alley and some I understand he needs to do that.
Mine's beautiful.
And we'll verify that.
I got a brand new one, it's, 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 it's all dug out, it's all cool, so I'm not talking about that.
Okay, we'll verify that tomorrow with the act of any.
So the new water meters, in addition to the digital readout, it has a transmitter that, there's no more.
I got you.
And that they, the system that the city's going with is the drive-by to pick up those reads.
So will it bypass all, like, the Buffalo boxes then? It'll just bypass that, it'll go through that line and into your house and have the meter there or?
Wherever your meter's located now, it'll be replaced in that same position.
So it's gonna stay in the Buffalo box?
In the meter vault, if you have a vault where your meter's at.
Yeah.
It will stay in the vault, yes.
If in your house, it's in your house.
It's, it's, it's a very efficient way to read the meters so that it can be done quickly. And you're talking about, uh, instead of it being done quarterly, it can be done very easily on a monthly basis because of how long it takes to read them, it's, it's literally an hour.
And how long is it gonna take to replace the old meters and how, and what cost to the residents?
There's no specific cost to the resident, it could take up to a year. I believe a projected time of maybe two thousand nineteen, I believe.
They will all be replaced.
And hopefully that's only a time limit.
Cost?
So if, if, if I, please allow me to continue as well through the, the, so the issue of, of water, drinking water, is regionally, it's a big issue. City of Chicago, I'm not sure what they raised the rates over the last six years, I believe it's close to three hundred percent. And again, water is, water is important.
They just had a hike and it was only twenty-nine percent.
Yeah, it's not them.
Not over the last six years.
But this year, they have.
What's going on in Chicago has got nothing to do with us.
It does because, because for instance, the city of Hammond, the city of Hammond raised their rates also. In alignment with the city, they kept it, Chicago, they kept it just below so that people purchasing water from Hammond would continue to. So again, let me flow through it. So the price of water has gone up dramatically. The village of Burnham is not alone by any means, by way of towns, struggling with the issue of high-priced water. And accurate being mandated by the IDNR to account for your water, where it's going to. One of the easiest ways to do it is have accurate meters. The meter's gotta be accurate, you're not accurately accounting for the water use. There's, you know, so much you can do with water leaks, you can do leak surveys, you can address water main breaks quickly, you can make sure that all the buildings in town are metered because back in the day, municipal owned buildings often, it's a city-owned building, we're not gonna charge ourselves water, so they didn't even put in a water meter. And you make sure that the waters, all the water's accounted for by way of meters. And once that's done, then you can work on tightening up the aged infrastructure. And that, I'm gonna say it, if you guys think of the, the cost of a meter.
No, I think our bill is probably a drastic increase, that's what we're talking about.
No, I.
Right.
The, the point, the point I'm, I'm trying to get to is the aged infrastructure is, is huge. And everyone likes to see brand-new pavement and new curbs and look how nice the street looks, but we've got sewers that are eighty, a hundred years old. We've got water mains that are over eighty years old, we've got galvanized services, we've got, I'm gonna say that word, lead services. And a hundred years from now, they're gonna look at us and say, really? You, you guys drank water to a lead pipe and thought coating that was okay? There, there are a lot of issues. Towns like Burnham, smaller communities especially, with the IDNR mandates, are, are struggling. There's no easy, cheap fix. You, you've got, I, I don't know, Mayor, if you've already gone through with the other towns, what they charge?
We're gonna, um, we're also gonna have a town hall meetings throughout the town and I think the first one will be January the fourth. Now, when you do not get a flyer, I mean, don't say you were not invited to the meeting, but it's gonna be by area. And if it's not your area, then you will not get a flyer for that meeting, but there will be a meeting for every area and everybody in town will be invited. And I, I mean, like George said earlier, we don't have an area that will accommodate everybody at the same time and that's, and therefore, we'll invite them by area and we can have that set in place.
Will you put flyers in our mailboxes? I'm sorry, will you put flyers in our mailboxes to advise us?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
The, the only other thing I can say again is that the other municipalities since twenty twelve, Homewood has replaced their water meters. Indian Head Park has replaced their water meters. Oak Forest, Calumet City, Lansing's in the process of it, La Grange, Joliet, Aurora. Literally, the, the, the water meter market regionally is struggling to keep up with the demand for accurate reads as a result of, number one, the prices, the, the primary distribution center, the city of Chicago, and number two, the, uh, demands from the IDNR. And that, that's, I can, I can talk all night if you want.
Can I ask you a question, Oreo? How are we accounting for the water that's being taken from a trucking firm, um, that's filling tanker trucks? How is that water being accounted for?
Accountable, what else? Accountable, regulator.
So they're getting water free?
No, no, we don't give anything away, but you know better than that.
They're taking it right from the hydrant. We've watched them build the tanker trucks.
We know that, but we know how much it takes.
A lot of, uh.
But we know how much it's gonna hold, right?
So you don't, you don't write it down.
So the tanker trucks are taken from the fire hydrant?
I think that would be pretty good.
There you go.
You know, is, is it more accurate, does it, does it mean, basically, is the bill.
Could you speak up so we can hear?
Is the bill extremely higher than, uh, than it was before they replaced the meter? No, no, the, the bills actually in a lot of the towns, believe it or not, are actually lower. Number one, because they, they are attuned to the issue, right? Five years ago, water was, nobody cares. Now, people care, they're attuned to the issue. People fill up five gallon buckets and they look at their meter and they say, yeah, five gallons, okay, my meter's accurate this week. And they use that for water implants or, or whatever. Leak detection is another, uh, uh, big benefit of the improved system. You can, you can get as fancy, as, as many bells and whistles as you want to where there are notifications, if you use an X amount of water, it's, they are happy with it. And again, some, a lot of people, the bills have gone down because they are more tuned to the issue. Yes, just the apologies.
Let me first say that we appreciate all the, the work that you do in South City, we do a lot of work for, for South City, we use the call this year. Appreciate your advice. Um, also, uh, per, I'm, I'm sure with our leak surveys, that the water mains are not the problem with our water loss. Our water loss is coming from our meters and our hydrants, faulty hydrants, that's fair to say. Um, also, what is going to be our, uh, water loss percentage with these new meters?
Well, I, I couldn't venture a guess, how many meters are, uh, are estimated in town?
All of them.
This is actual.
With the, with the new meters?
No.
What's the percentage of water loss from the meter read? Exactly, the accuracy.
So, the accuracy rate for the, uh, census Ipro meters is, it's, it's graduated over twenty years. Okay, the batteries, there's gonna be a battery in the meter and a battery in the transmitter, right, to send the signal to the drive-by system. And it is a, uh, graduated reduction in accuracy from ninety-nine percent to ninety-six percent over a twenty-year period that's guaranteed by census meters.
So those batteries are good for twenty years?
They're guaranteed for twenty years with a pro rated if they fail early. The, of, for, if, if, if the battery's thirty bucks, or the meter, let's call the meter a hundred bucks, for the first fifteen years, if it's in that, if the battery fails, it's under warranty, they cover it. Under six, after sixteen years, they'll give you ninety percent and for seventeen years, eighty, there's a.
Like a current battery.
Used to be.
And my next question, this is after that, what's the?
And those, those details really should go to census, they can tell you exactly what those.
The manufacturer?
Please don't hold me to those.
Uh, you're not gonna be doing, are you gonna be doing the installation, your company?
Uh, we would bid the project if it comes out for bid, yes.
Okay, and what's the cost per meter for this installers?
That.
Give us a ballpark estimated cost of what a household could run.
It's gonna be a couple hundred bucks plus the installation. I, I don't know if you've got ballpark numbers or.
It also gonna depend, and it's also gonna depend where the meter is, and if the meter's gonna be better off the place in your house, they gotta tear the whole wall out and get to it, but then that has to be repaired back. Or if they take the walls out, they require to put it back.
So who gonna, who gonna pay and put their wall back?
Obviously, obviously, it's never been read.
He's saying they're gonna do it, oh.
And I just said that they have to go in your closet and tear it out, whatever, get the meter in, and they'll be required to put it back, and it need to be way above. And then that would drive the cost up a little bit depending on where the meter gonna access, is that what drives the cost up?
What's the, uh, estimated cost per residence for each meter installation?
That, I'd be honest.
Have you guys just finished Calumet City, right?
Yes, and, and I'm not the general contractor on their job, I, I really, I can't tell you. The, the cost of the unit. Meter costs and, for instance, the, the drive-by system, I have no idea what that costs. I apologize.
But you would actually have to go around, they kind of look at the area, then you're gonna be doing the replacements, come in with a bit. Well, I know, I know each, each residence, each residence is gonna be different because they're made different somewhere outside, somewhere inside, but, but considering that one was just done, what's the approximate cost per labor for each resident? Is what I see.
I'm sure, is that, and. What I'd be happy to do, trustee, is, uh, if you get your budget numbers, I can get you other projects, what they paid for installation, I'd be happy to get that to you.
Oh, that would be great, sir.
Uh, one more question, Jillian. Um, what, what, uh, issue or problems did they have with either installation or after it was installed? You know, was there any major glitches in the program, uh, after it was installed?
The, um. As for making it, they take them all back, they bring them all back, they don't charge you for any of that, they, they will stand behind it. Uh, as for bigger issues, you're gonna have issues in town where on the older lines, when you play with them, there're gonna be some leaks, right? The homes in town, how many are over sixty years? Seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred, and it's the original water lines that have been put in.
Exactly.
And we've all had your house, roofs replaced, water heaters replaced, all these things replaced, but the water service is original. And whether it's lead or galvanized, it's.
Who's gonna be responsible if you spring a leak? Is it the homeowner or is it whoever's contracted?
Typically, what happens in most towns is this, if, depending on the age of the piping and the condition of the piping, the installer will look at it and say, I don't, I don't even wanna look at this, I won't touch it. It's, this is, we can do it, but we're not responsible for any repairs. Sometimes it's on the homeowner, depending on what's involved, sometimes the village can cover it. If it's on the live side, for instance, the service valve, those are all, each town is different.
My other question is, this is the computer, right? So to speak.
It's a software.
They're right by a computer.
Well, it's, it's still the computer thing. We have people that know how to jam computers. You see my point? Well, what happens, they could go ahead and jam their water meter and turn it off for two weeks. How are you gonna know that that particular meter is not jammed for two months?